I'd like to call to order the Springfield Township Board of Trustees' public hearing regarding the proposed joint request for bids for the collection of solid waste. Roque Hall, Mr. Vernon.
Yes, Mr. Farland. Mr. Vernon, present. Mr. Farland, present.
Present.
All are present.
Now, we're going to hear from our administrative assistant, Mr. Gilbert. He's going to talk about the process regarding the solid waste joint request proposal for proposal and for the RFP and bid specifications.
Thank you, Mr. Farland. This evening, as you mentioned, we have been in discussions with Hamilton County Solid Waste in regards to putting out a joint request proposal from solid waste haulers to bid on the services of providing solid waste or garbage and recycling collection for township residents. As you see here, the three communities that are willing to get together with this joint request proposal, obviously it's us, Coleraine Township, and Ross Township and all the counties. There are many other townships in Hamilton County that are interested in pursuing this, but in terms of geographical areas that made the most sense for communities to join together for this proposal, they gave us the best opportunity to receive favorable pricing, it was Coleraine, us, and Ross Township, being that we are contiguous, that made the most sense, and the price setting to Rumpie, obviously, assuming Rumpie bids favorably would make the most sense. The High Revise Code 505.27 authorizes or allows townships to enter into a contract with waste haulers to provide this service and be the sole provider of that service within township, and that's the section of the code that we are using that give us the authority to forward with this process. Now, looking at, as most people are wanting to know, and as we've talked in great length about over the past few months, is what are the benefits, what are the negatives, and what will be the timeline of this proposal? The benefits, obviously, or we're hoping the benefits, would be is to provide community with water cost, garbage and recycling collection. It would provide greater accountability over certain charges and fees. Right now, the waste hauler has sort of a carte marteale of authority to put any surcharges or any fees they want on your monthly bill. There's no one that has oversight in terms of what they're charging. By entering to a sole provider contract, we would have the ability within the contract to limit into eliminating certain surcharges and fees that you're currently being charged. It would potentially increase community recycling because any bid specifications, as you'll see here shortly, includes recycling. It isn't an additional option. It's actually included in the base collection service. And then greater accountability to residents, meaning we would have then the authority as your local governmental contractor to go to the provider and ensure that they're abiding by the contract and providing the service that they've indicated they would via the contract. Some of the negatives, to be totally upfront, is that it would prevent and prohibit residents from choosing their own waste hauler. There would be one sole provider that the township contract was on your behalf, and you would be required to utilize that quite. Residents cannot opt out of it. Discontinuement with special agreements that you may have between your waste hauler and property, there may be certain agreements that you have, but that would go away because there would be one contract for all township residents. And it limits bulk items to once a month, as opposed to now, where you may be able to put bulk items out every single week, but the bid specification will limit it to once a month. The timeline that we're looking at is that the RFP would be issued the week of April 6th, the results of the bid is a week would be due May 15th, the contracts would be awarded sometime in August, therefore, the implementation would be sometime April of 2016. The reason we're looking at such a long lifetime, if the board chooses to award a contract based on the bid, is because certain waste haulers need time to prepare their staff, prepare their equipment to provide a service of a contract of this magnitude. We're talking almost 40,000 accounts that this will be when you include all three communities. As indicated, there are many other townships that are interested right now, they're just not in a position because of their geographical location, or they're not in a position right now with whatever they have on, reasons of individual communities to pursue this particular process, but at this point, as mentioned, about 40,000 households with the three communities is what we're looking after this contract.
There are other townships that are going out to bid for this, they just won't be with us.
Correct. Correct. And then if they're not doing it current, I mean, they already have contracts with us. Those entities that don't currently have contracts, they're not putting out a proposed RFP right now at the same time we are, but they may in the future. The current rates, and these are average rates, and they exclude the surcharges and fees, as you can see, right now we're at about $20 a month, 22 including recycling a month for garbage and recycling, that's the average rate that residents are paying. That's pretty typical, as you see, through some of the other townships in the county. Agree, they'll have a slightly lower rate, and Coleraine currently has a slightly lower rate, mainly probably because of their proximity and their relationship with Rumpie. But the expectation is, is that that rate possibly could be, I'm not going to speculate, but the idea is obviously that that rate could be lowered through this process and requiring all residents choose the one waste hauler. As mentioned, the base bid, that's in the bid specs currently, includes both garbage and recycling, that's unlimited garbage, meaning you can put out five cans, you put out eight cans, you put up two cans. Well, we're doing unlimited garbage, waste, yard waste is included in that, and yard waste will be collected, in the same manner that it is now, that will change. That's the way we're writing the bid specs now. The only difference would be that in the bid specs, under the base cost that everyone would have to buy by, not only would it be unlimited garbage and unlimited yard waste, but it's also going to be recycling, that will be collected on a weekly basis. Each customer, each resident would receive, these household will receive a 64 gallon, or 65 gallon cart for recycling versus the small bins you have now. The idea is that both the waste hauler, and Hamilton Solid Waste, and frankly, the township was trying to encourage additional recycling, which, being that we have unlimited yard waste and unlimited garbage, recycling option, including that in, is going to allow for recycling counts to go up, and frankly, may incentivize people to choose one of the discounted options that we're also writing in the bid specs, where you can have yard waste, you can have recycling, and then you can have limited garbage collection, which would be to what you can fit into one 96 gallon cart. That would be a rate that would be discounted from the base bid rate. So hypothetically, if the bid, base bid rate comes in at $16 a month, the discount to one can per week may be $14 a month. We don't know what that price would be, but the idea is that you'll have an unlimited rate, which was the default rate, then you can choose to have the one can rate. Additionally, as mentioned, you'll have one collection a month for both items. The garbage collection will be weekly collection. You will be able to get the 96 gallon cart that some of you may have now, or that residents may have now, at an additional fee. So while the base rate is unlimited, the actual cart does not come with that, that would be an additional fee. However, if you choose the one can a week discounted option, the cart does come with that option.
It comes free.
Well, it's included in that price.
Included in the price.
Yes. There may be for additional fee, backyard service for the disabled, so if you have elderly or disabled individuals that are unable to get their cart to the curb, there is a service that the waste hauler will provide for additional fee, that they will come and get the can from the back of their house and bring it out to the curb, and then put it back. And again, as mentioned, recycling is included in that base rate and bundled into the cost, so there's no discount for opting out of recycling because that is part of the base collection rate. In addition, as mentioned, the bulk items once a month, there is backyard service and private garage service that is available for additional fee, similar to the disabled, where they'll actually come down in private garage if you have a fairly long driveway, or if you just simply if you're not disabled, we want backyard service, you will be able to provide to you for additional fee. We're looking at stripping the hours, it'll be a lot of records in the neighborhoods between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. So if you have waste haulers now that are in your neighborhood at 3:30, 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, then the contract will prohibit that, and they will be required to wait until at least 6:00 a.m. to start collecting. The waste hauler will bill all residents in a quarterly fashion, so the waste hauler will bill residents directly. This is unlike some of the other contracts you see throughout the county, in that a lot of municipalities pay this on behalf of the residence out of the general fund, or they have a particular tax law associated with this, and the waste hauler bills it directly. With us, because of we have a legal mechanism in place to bill residents for this service, the waste hauler will bill residents directly, and similar as you get billed now. For the township resolution that will come after the selection of waste hauler entered into the contract, each household entered will be required to pay the base fee, as mentioned, which will include the garbage, recycling, and garbage, and one bulk item per month. The hauler may assess late fees on the legal accounts. The waste hauler will be able to discontinue service after a 90 day delinquency, and they may require reactivation too, which is all similar, assuming to what you currently have in an individual contract now, and then the contractor I mentioned is responsible for all the collections. There are some exemptions, and keep in mind that because we have two other communities involved, there are certain exemptions in certain situations that apply to the townships that may not apply to another, which is with working farms. Obviously, Ross Township has many more working farms than we do here in Springfield, therefore, they want an exemption for the working farms, that working farms may be able to opt out of this process because they have other means to dispose of waste. Similarly, mixed use owner occupied properties may be able to opt out, meaning if there's a residence that also has a business associated with it, and they have a dumpster, but they also live there, they may be able to opt out, like, because they have an individual agreement for a dumpster service for their property. And also, we are limiting it to single family residences, which includes individually young condo developments, as well as multifamily or apartment dwellings of four units or less. So when it says five or more units attached, that means they're exempted, they're out. Only four units or less of single family or condos are included into the actual bid. The base fee is fixed, the only other charges will be the actual fuel cost adjustment, which will be included in the specs, so there's a formula by which that the waste hauler can provide for increases in fuel, but the beauty is, in the specs, it also includes for a decrease as well. So if fuel goes down, then the fuel surcharge goes down, whereas now, they never reduce your price for that, they always increase it. The beauty is, we'll be able to do it both ways in the contract. The contract is for five years, this will be a five year contract, and as stated, it will, the proposed start date is April of 2016, and the contract will require protocols for this pickup cost, so they will be, they will be required to back and get that in spills, snow delays, holidays, any complaint resolutions or employee misconduct, will be able to work on your behalf and ensure that those issues are remedied. Except for recyclables, I think this is all commonplace information, that you know what is included in recyclables, but it's pretty separate, that isn't going to change from what you're currently being provided now, if you do have a recycling service. And as mentioned, I think Hamilton County Solid Waste would attest that the benefits of recycling are to conserve energy, you can save natural resources, possibly create jobs, and provide some stock to industries that actually use it and manufacture, or create products with recyclable materials. So with that, that concludes the proposed request proposals, and if there's any questions that the board can answer, I'd like to note that Michelle, I'm not Michelle, I'm sorry, Holly, with Hamilton Solid Waste is here intended, so if there's any questions that we can answer up here, she may be able to answer, and I'm sure there may be some of them.
One thing that, of what everyone understands, is we did not agree to any kind of contract with anybody to do this. At this point, all we're doing is seeing what our options are. And I say that because I'm not 100% sure that we will or won't do it, I'm not 100% sure Coleraine will or won't do it, and if they pulled out, or we pulled out, that might change the price for the other party and so forth and so on. So this is just an exploratory thing, if we can't get our residents significant savings, if, you know, we're not going to switch to this to save, you know, 50 cents or a dollar a month, or something like that, because it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. So we're going to look at it, we're going to see what they come back with, we're getting numbers from all over the state when they've done this, there's numbers that are really low, and then there's numbers that aren't as low. So we have no idea what the bids are going to come in at, so until we know that, we will not make a decision, and again, it's going to have to be significant for us to make some sort of a change.
And Mr. Vernon, I would add, that's a good point, that there are different prices in the commonwealth of the state, and I think Holly would attest to this, that you can't read too much into those numbers, because a waste hauler may bid on a particular program for a myriad of different reasons. And some communities in the north, there are some waste haulers that are bidding on programs that simply are just to put other ones out of business, so they're lowballing those bids. There are other areas where they may not fear that they have really that much competition, so they can see the bids higher. You can't forget what your bid's going to be based on what you see another community get, because there's a lot of reasons behind what that particular bid was and why it was priced the way it, the way it is.
Mr. Farland, do you have a comment?
Well, the way thing is, and we, as a board, we've had an opportunity to review this, to study the request council, and the purpose of this meeting is to hear from you the public, and to get your, get your comments and feedback. I know I did have some discussions after the State of the Township meeting here this past week with, I know one of our residents who's here, and had some thoughts regarding this, so, you know, I would be, unless you have any other things?
I, I.
Neither. We'd like to hear from what the public's thinking.
Right, it's really critical that we get feedback from you. From my perspective, as Mr. Vernon indicated, if, if the, if this is an opportunity that's going to save our residents, then I'm all for it, but if it's something that's just going to be a nickel or dime, or 50 cents or a dollar, it's not really worth it. And then also, once we finally complete all the research, we will make a final decision from there. Pending, all of the other communities are still going to be in. If they're not in and opt out, then we will do the same thing.
Well, actually, the way the bid specs are written, if one community opts out, the waste hauler's not required to honor the bid. The bid is for all three communities. If one community opts out, the waste hauler can decide not to honor any of those. In fact, the community, I think, will be precluded from achieving, if they get out of the debate.
Well, if Ross Township pulls out and they go, they'll change, but if Coleraine pulled out, then.
Right.
They have a larger, so.
Right.
So now I'd like to hear from, we'd like to hear from the audience, any thoughts that you may have, any comments, please. Again, I request that you step to the podium and share your thoughts and concerns with us, and again, request that the audience abstain from any discussion, so that we can give our fullest attention to the individual with the proposal. Thank you.
My name is Bob Rockfield, I live in Finney Town.
What's your address, Bob?
750 Reynard.
Thank you.
It's exciting to think about these options. I'm excited, for example, to think about recycling more. Right now, I use one of those little curtains I mentioned, but I also think about public health. I would sure like to see the bulk items cleaned up instead of collecting rats somewhere. And I would sure like to see yard waste handled, for example, the composting. I think about in the past, that we pick up leaves and things like that, and aren't able to do that anymore, and might bring something like that back into the thing. But you have the whole waste stream to deal with, and you get a professional company like Rumpie, who will want to work with this, give us some ideas, and it's just very exciting to me. Thank you very much for reading this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
One gentleman in the back first, and then the gentleman, and then the gentleman, yes.
My name's John Ewald, 8645 Z of Court. First of all, I want to say the gas program you guys put together has been beneficial for many residents in the community, and this trash program, same thing, I think there's a lot of benefits to it. A lot of the questions I had were answered in your presentation, you did a great job on it. About fees, they have to be controlled. Before I come up tonight, I have to copy my bill out, I am charged for service and fuel charge only. If they start adding on a lot of administration fees, and all this, all the surcharges, it's going to take a bite out of this thing. We want to keep it nice. But I guess my biggest question, is I saw on recycling, we currently receive money from Hamilton County for recycling, and there's an opportunity for this to increase through the thing below the website, like 20,000 plus. My question is, where's that money go? What funds it going to? And my other question is, on the recycling program and on this trash program, what's good for the township? Do you guys, does the township, do we, as a township, receive funds from the, for putting these contracts into place?
No, the only thing that the township would benefit from is the waste, you know, the recycling that you talked about, if there's more recycling, then the township will get a little bit more money for that, correct?
What happens is, as a percentage of recycling that the community has, so we're saying, well, for right now, we're about 9%. So of, of all the garbage that's created, 9% of that is recycling that individuals are dealing with, from a tonne standpoint. The township, based on a form of, from Hamilton County Solid Waste, gives a portion of that back to be used for recycling products, so products that were made with recycled goods, whether that be a park bench, park equipment, any type of material that's recyclable goods, or, as you see out here, the community recycling dumpsters that we have, those are paid for, we actually have to pay Rumpie to have those, if they develop and utilize them, those are paid for by recycling dollars that come back from the community. So that's what the money is used for, it goes into a recycling fund, and it can only be used for recycling products or recycling services such as the waste dumpsters that you actually see right now, are going to be.
And I agree.
Events, cleanup days, things like that.
And that's what I, what I want to just, the point I guess I'm striving to make, there's going to be an increase, tentative increase, it's, you know, it's ballpark, additional monies, and it would be nice to see, and I agree with this gentleman, without putting a different program in, like for composting.
Right.
To address additional issues in the trash, but I think it's beneficial for the community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joe Gorman, 8824 Falmouth Drive. I like the idea of this, like another aggregate type of situation where we would have an opportunity to reduce the costs. I know my Rumpie bill, I get charged the fuel surcharge, and they told me that they can't change it if it keeps on, you know, going up or whatever. And I'm also charged, I believe, for my recycling bin, I got one of the big, the big cans, and we found that we, probably 90% of our, of our waste is recycled in our house, so we would like, we would like to see this program, if there's a way for us, to really promote recycling over the waste, and we'd also do a lot of composting at my house. So how do you think this program will incentivize people to recycle?
Well, I think Holly would tell you that those communities that have a contract versus subscription, which we are currently, which are currently what they prefer to subscription, those communities that actually move waste from subscription to the contract, they see anywhere from a 30 to 40% recycling rate, whereas right now, we're at about 1%.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out who else besides Rumpie is out there right now providing this waste collection.
The two other waste haulers that we think have the capacity to handle a contract of this size is Best Way and Republic. Now, there may be others, but those are the ones we see typically, or Solid Waste sees typically bid on, on the communities of this, of this size.
But geographically, with our three townships, as they talk about this, are we actually trying to put the squeeze on Rumpie on this?
Nope. They're free to bid, just like.
No, if we just would, if we only set up your Rumpie, then they would just give us the same price we already have.
Right, so compensation.
Thanks.
Thank you. Gentlemen, oh, yes, please step to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Cox, COX. I live at 993 Cherry Blossom Lane. First, I'd like to thank everybody for actually pursuing this and go after and doing a lot of research into it. Some of the questions that I've had aren't going to ask, so I'm not going to ask them again. I guess one of the questions that I did have was on the recycling, because what I have found through my research is that a lot of the companies, in fact, do make quite a bit of money on recycling, metal, glass, paper, and that, that is a very high value item. So I guess my question is, is that within the contract, and part of the question was already asked by this gentleman right there on the recycling, was the feedback to Springfield Township, in terms of, do we have within the contract an effective manner to really understand how much is being collected, weight wise, pound wise, ton wise? Would that be built into the contract so we had a good idea of what kind of tonnage would be going in?
That is a good question.
Yes, we, we actually know it now. Without our contracts, we know how much, as I mentioned, we're at about 9% now, that's reported by the waste haulers in our community, and we know how much we recycle as a percentage of total waste tonnage that's being taken out of the township.
So we have a good number then?
Yes.
Is what you're telling me?
Yes.
So we would know, you know, whether or not we're really getting a good return, coming back to, okay. The other question I was going to ask, which was asked by you too, was how many haulers are there? You said there was two, besides Rumpie, that was being considered. Would you open it up to other bidders, or are these just the ones that?
You told them to all bidders.
Okay, we just gave you the ones we think might bid on the contract.
Understood, okay, thank you. The other question I had was, on the $20 that you, you had in there, that, that's currently what we're paying on average?
It was, what was it, it was 25?
Yeah, I think it was around 20.
23?
23, 29 with recycling, without 20, 79, that's accounted into township, everyone doesn't pay the exact same amount.
Okay, so would we still be charged for the recycling?
No, it would be a specific.
So it would be another way?
Recycling would be included, and everybody would be able to participate, so you couldn't say, I don't want to, if you don't want to recycle, you still have to pay the same as everyone else, okay? That's how you entice people to recycle.
Okay, so we don't know yet what the actual monthly amount would be until we get the bids booked. Understood. Okay. The final question I had was that, is this just residential within the township, or does this include businesses?
Just residential.
Just residential, okay. Would, would it make any difference whether we included businesses or not?
Our understanding is it's very difficult to try and bring businesses into this, just because of all the differing needs they have, it would, it's not something that works well, you know, with aggregation, which is kind of the same thing with our energy aggregation, it's residential in nature primarily.
Okay, so this would just be residential?
Commercial industrial would be excluded.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because a lot of businesses have bulk pallets and stuff like that, that's, you know, we don't really deserve that garbage, that's more.
Some have oil pickup, some have oil pickup, some have, you know, garbage has big compactor, because they have so much, so, everyone's different.
They're daily pickups as well.
So you can't really just lump that into one ball, like.
Yeah, I was curious about that. That was really all the questions that I had, I really do appreciate all the efforts that went into digging into this and taking a look at it. I'm pretty sure that took a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, a lady in the back, yes, you, is it Robin?
Hi, I'm Rosie Upikolski, I'm at 8364 Jatten Street, down in Valleydale. And I, I guess, I just need a little clarification. My first kind of, first thought is like, I'm kind of losing my choice of being able to choose, you know, who I want to provide a service for me, kind of just out there. Second of all, okay, we can put out as many trash cans as we want. Do we have to buy their trash cans to put out as many cans as we want?
No, you do not. No, you do not.
My other question, and I kind of caught this, is this a subscriber service, or I thought I heard it mentioned that they would bill the households? So do people have an option to don't get their garbage picked? So do people have an option to don't get their garbage picked up now? They won't pay?
Your question, your question was?
My question is, I have neighbors who don't use Runkie. They get rid of their trash however, they get rid of it. But it had said that the company who won the bid would bill the households. So do you have an option not for them to pick up their trash?
No.
So you are obligated to pay for trash pickup because you live in Springfield Township?
Correct, there are rare exceptions I would answer. Some individuals may be excluded based on their specific circumstances, if they have an opportunity, for example, that they can, they're required to, or they have the ability to dispose of their waste at their particular employer for whatever reason, and they can provide occupation verification of that, they may be able to be excluded. But no, all individuals will be required, all households will be required to participate, and there will not be any opportunity to opt out.
So if I were to decide, I have a, a place where I work has a dumpster. I want to take my garbage there, I don't want to be part of it. That could be an exemption then, as long as I'm?
Yes, we require documentation and authorization from your employer to justify that. Form of affidavit, you're not just going to say that. You have to, you got to.
You know, I, I remember looking down my street tonight, tomorrow's garbage day. You know, it's just spotted with the houses that have trash out, weekly. But those homes will be obligated to get a bill for something they're probably not going to use.
Unless it's determined, my understanding, that we have, wherever they're placing their garbage, and this is for sanitary reasons, so there has to be some justification and validation that you are taking your garbage to another place.
Well, I have, I have a question. I think one of the slides, and Chris, maybe I'll track this towards you. One of the slides here says that if you don't pay for 90 days, they can kick you out of the program.
That's true.
Would that be one way that somebody doesn't want it, they don't pay, and then they, it says contractor may discontinue service after 90 day delinquency.
True, but as.
That means you're not paying a bill.
Right, that's not, I'm not saying it's a great. I think individuals that don't currently have garbage collection, that's a rare exception. Most people have some company that's collecting their garbage. If not, I'm curious to know what they're doing with their household waste.
They're taking it to work?
Again, if they have that situation, they may be able to be excluded, assuming that they can provide verification that their employees, their employers allow them to do that.
Sure, I work with people who bring their trash to my town.
They will be required to participate.
And, and we agree with you that everything about this is not, you know, perfect. There's, anytime you try to do something, there's going to be pros in common. Until we have a price, we don't know if the pros for most of the township will outweigh the cons for the lesser amount of the township. So that's why we're looking at it. We haven't signed up for anything.
Sure, and that's kind of a question I have too. It, it sounds like that the trustees will make this decision. And I'm just wondering, I, I got an email yesterday afternoon stating about this meeting today at 5:30. And so kind of my question is too, how do like my neighbors find out about this? Is this something that's just going to be done, and you're going to get a notice that X, Y, and Z is now collecting your garbage, this is how much it's going to cost, pick up your can, or? I mean, it's out there, I mean, look how many people are here, the number in the township. How, are they?
If those individuals that don't have the email, is there?
Let me, let me address that, if I can, if I can address that. We used to have township newsletters we sent out to all registered voters. The meeting we had before this tonight was over our permanent appropriations, and I don't know if you were here to see that or not, but we suffered, we suffered about 52% reduction in our general fund, which was the fund that we used to send out those newsletters. And just, it was one of the things that got cut, you know, we had to give it up. It was great, it was a great way to get out information to everyone, but we just said, that's got to go, there's, we can't do it anymore. And, and you're right, it's, it's hard in local governments like ours to get the word out to everyone, because a lot of people are just busy, they're not looking at our website. You know, we encourage them to, and, and we certainly, anybody can sign up and you will receive emails at no cost from the township, you know, notices of anything like this we're sending out. But it is hard to get the word out today, and it's expensive.
Sure, and I know it passes a lot of the information on to my elderly neighbors who don't even know how to, where to buy your house.
The other thing is, any, any resident is welcome to come to our meeting the second Tuesday of each month, between now and when, you know, I don't know how to put the order if he comes back, but you could come the second Tuesday, can come the second Tuesday, can we have a public forum during the month, so.
It's kind of sounding like it's going to be decided by May or whatever, when they close, and then make a decision.
That's why the bid will come in.
And so then the question is, when this is decided, say you're going to the company, then how does the township find out about it? Is, is it going to be the company's responsibility to send a notice saying, we are now your trash collector, and you will pay?
It wouldn't start until 2016.
So it'll be done. So residents in Springfield Township will be getting this notice, maybe some of them for the first time stating, this is it, you're part of it. I mean, I just want her to bring that up, and I won't take up any more time, but that, the whole thing, I'm taking a breath, don't, I don't have a choice, but you can over it, but that's still sticking. And I think if, when the people come to the day that they get a letter saying, you're paying for this trash, I think that's when people start speaking up. I don't think they come looking for this, I'm glad I did tonight, it's been very informative.
What I'd like to, as all, as well, is for individuals, if they have questions about the, this waste program, then they can call the township as well. I don't want people waiting until the second Tuesday of each month. So if they have any questions or concerns, feel free to call us at 522-1410 number, and we will respond to those questions.
Well, and I guess the other issue too is, so you're locked into this for five years, what if I don't like my service? What if a lot of people don't like the service? What if someone undercut it, saying, oh, we can do it, we'll get it done? And it's not what we've been used to.
Well, there was a slide before, somewhere.
It was really hard to see that.
Okay, there was a slide that Chris just put up, if there was any concerns regarding the service or the quality of service. Where was that? Oh, here.
Performance, performance term, yeah. For ending the performance, and obviously those can be breach of contract.
Right.
Reasons for ending the contract, if the, it's like any contract, if they're not performing, there's going to be performance requirements.
Really, well, I think, so if we're locking into five years, are we locking into five years of the cost of the monthly service?
That's mine.
Will be locked in?
Yes.
So after a year, it will be readjusted by OGA, we should have, okay. Well, I won't take up any more time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Henley, 6341 Richfield Drive in town. When you first talked about doing this, I'm back and pulled some bills, and I explained to Mike I had misspoke at one meeting. I do pay single can service, I pay four times a year. From February 2010 up to the most recent one, in February 2015, it went from 49.50 a quarter up to 52.65 a quarter. There's a 90 cent regulatory cost charge that disappeared this year, and I don't remember why, but I think it's something went off the books. The fuel surcharge has been as low as 4.40 and as high as 50, and that's not included in that. If my math is right, and you're saying a $20 average, I'm going to end up paying $8 more a month for garbage than I pay now for a single can. Now, I've had Runkie for 16 years, minus two years when I worked for CSI Republic Services, and the only reason I dropped it was because it was a freebie because I worked for them. And they missed my can once in 16 years, and that was in December. And I don't know what the reason, I was because of the street, they didn't see her, what, but they came right out and got it. I'm all for saving money, but my question is, if you're going to do this, and all complaints are coming to you, Chris, is that a good use of your time?
Let me just clarify something. You indicated that you will, based on what you've seen, you'll pay $8 more a month. Those numbers you put up there are numbers on the average people are paying now, that's not what we're expecting the bid to be.
But is that single can service?
No, that's unlimited.
Okay, see, I've got.
You will have an option in the bid specs that allows people to choose single can service, which is a discounted option from the base bid price.
Okay.
We don't know what either, you get this.
I just, I, I knew they were average numbers, but I don't need the big service. I mean, it's just maybe an hour, time and a half a can. I don't recycle frankly, because I refuse to pay for it. But if they want to provide as part of it, I'll sort the garbage out, I'll take out separate cans, I don't have any problem with that.
Can you answer your question, I mean, my time, nothing to bore it, or question for them, how will we spend my time, I, I work for them?
Yeah, if you're not billing it, not taking advantage of the cash, cash stream, and there's nothing coming back to you, I'm just saying, as time, as your time is with Sam, can you take that on? Or you better spend some of your time somewhere else?
Well, we, we have, we're here to do what we can and provide the best service at the lowest rate for our residents. So that means, Chris, and all of us will be working to ensure that, you know, this is smooth, it's a smooth and transparent process. And the bottom line is going to be a service for our residents. So we just make it work.
Yeah, I'm on work, isn't it?
If the trustees can save the residents 40% on their garbage. That's what they're looking at. If it doesn't save any money, it's not worth our time or your. But if they can, if they can do this, and it's all of a sudden, instead of paying $22 or $3, you're paying 14, I mean, it's worth it. You know, they work for the residents, so they're trying to do this for residents, not for us, you know, for them or the township itself.
No, no, I'd save money on all four, as long as it's not offset by using township resources that aren't tied right now. I think this is a two-way street. Are they going to be robo pickups, or is it going to be manhandle cans?
It will, it will happen, you know, because there's no specification to, there's no requirement of the programmers to use those automated cans, so.
So these are just regular tores, and not set up for?
You can get, you can get the robo pickup can if you want. And if you're, if you choose the single can option, such as what you have now, it will be robo can, but that'll be included in the price per month. If you want to utilize a single, if you want to utilize non-robo can sort of collection can in the unlimited.
Well, my disadvantage now is because you go switch the parking, the parking goes on my side of the street, which means I got to take the robo can on the outside of the street, because they, they come down nonstop and they.
Just, no, I can go back, when you say robo can, this isn't where the driver never gets out of the truck.
That's what I mean.
No, 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 no. This is being built out of truck. They're not just getting two cabrio trucks.
I'm sorry?
You can use whoever can you want.
Okay, I thought you were talking about automated pickup, because it really works quite neat, as long as that truck can keep on moving.
Well, let me clarify, if you choose the single can option, the waste hauler will provide you with the can.
Okay.
But it's not what you referred to as road, it's the one where the guy brings it over to the back of the truck, that he puts it on the end, and then he takes it back.
Okay, so essentially same ways we have now?
Yes.
We're going to have toders, one for the recycling, one for the garbage.
I think that's important, the, the board has instructed us in this, and I think Holly will test through this whole process, and these many meetings that we've had to develop these bid specifications, the board has instructed us to make the bid is as similar as possible as to what residents have today. We don't want to require them to go with the waste hauler, and at the same time drastically change their service. So we try to make it so that we give a respectable bid app that could provide change, but at the same time not dramatically change the service.
And the other thing I would ask is, is make sure that if they're saying they're going to recycle, that they really do. I work very close with a company that picked up recyclable toders, and all that garbage and the recycling materials went in the same mix.
Robin, just so you know, the reason that she's here from the Hamilton County Waste Disposal, they're the ones that financed the resource that we've done on this, because they really, really want us, our community and all communities to do more recycling. That's the only reason they got involved and spent their money to try to make this happen. So they will keep.
And I'm all for it, I don't have a problem with it. Like I said, I can do it. If it's easy enough for me to do, I don't have a problem doing two bags out to the driveway, but one in, one here, that's fine.
Don't make sure that they do recycle.
Okay, thanks.
Right, definitely, it will win, win for our community, if it works, if we can work it that way.
All right, thanks.
There was another person that's. Oh, it's right there, yes, and she can.
My name is Sue Neil, London County City. My comment here has to do with the requirements on the recycling. I recycle, I use the small bed bin, it could take me a month to fill up the bigger one. And I know there's a lot of older people in the neighborhood that keep, they have a heck of a time with the bigger bins. So having an option for them, they have a smaller bin for the recycling. I watched my aunt trying to pull it up her driveway, and then I'm there, and it's like, you know, me trying to pull shack down, the type of thing. So that's the biggest concern I have, is for the older people not being able to use the bigger equipment as, as efficiently as we like to. I mean, on the same way, I like the big, the big trash can, but again, it takes me a month, I put one bag out, one small bag out a week, being a single person. The other, the thing I had was the four, the five plus on the residential. I know some people that have the four duplexes in the old plant in the hot, like that are over on Hamilton Avenue and that, where everybody does it individually anyhow, but there are some that I know do it for the whole, like they have a dumpster in the back. But they still have the option of doing that, some of the duplexes have done that too, where my son used to live, he had, lived in a duplex, they had a dumpster, and the landlord took care of all the trash, you know, the mental side. I know we don't have all that many of them in Springfield Township there that way, but would there be some options for them?
I think in the bid specification, it's going to require all single family, as well as any buildings with four units or less would have to be.
So you have four trash cans sitting back there, four recycling, rather than one?
Yes.
One more.
And I, I, in Springfield Township, I, I'm not familiar with, we, first of all, we don't have that many four units or less, and those that do, I'm not saying there's not any, but I'm not familiar with those that have dumpsters.
I know where my son used to live, they had a dumpster for a duplex, it was a small dumpster, but it was a.
Was it in Springfield Township?
I can't remember if it was in the township, if it was in the city where he lived.
I don't remember seeing any, most of them have single cans.
We'll look into that.
And they win one price, the building pays the price, but they all have their own cans.
Yeah, well, he pays, he didn't have to pay anything for part of your rent, but.
Right, part of the rent, well.
Yeah. Let's see what comments I got.
Thank you.
John Seymour, 854 Egorio Avenue. What a simple question for them. If, if it's not Runkie that wins the bid, what do the rest of us do with all the Runkie bids that we've already gotten? Will they be used by the best way, or?
They better be, I mean.
That would, that would be a simple mechanical question. The other thing that.
Let's, let's stop on that, because he's shaking his head no. Well, who owns those, Runkie or the individual?
It varies. If you're running $2 a month, you can buy them.
You bought it, you're going to be like, you.
Right. Did you buy it?
Yeah, if you bought it, if you bought it, you'll be able to, if you, if you're ready, no, you're.
If you're ready, but then somebody's got to come and collect it.
Runkie will.
Runkie will come collect it.
This is a mechanical question, how it all is going to work, because I could be a little mess when that happens that way. What, what interests me is that you're talking about 40,000 residents in this area, probably which dating 5% of them are already served by Runkie. And the question I have is, what does Runkie get out of this contract that allows them to be cheaper?
Well, what I think what you'll find is, like, Runkie doesn't want to lose 40, if they have 85% of 40,000, they don't want to lose that. So it's worth it to them to maybe take a little less money and keep the business than to let somebody else take that, because the business would be gone, that 85% of those 40,000, gone.
So it'd be competitive bidding, so.
And that's the idea of going to RME.
I'm trying to conceive what they would allow them to drop that rate, other than taking it off their bottom, bottom line.
They would take it off their bottom line, but if they don't, they lose 30-some thousand people in their bottom line suffers anyway.
And they don't get, because I was thinking about this, I would want to think of, are there route efficiencies between the various townships, that by increasing route efficiencies, going across the township boundaries, you'd be able to save a lot of money in the route efficiencies?
Just by aggregation, they'd be able to save money, because they could pick up every house on the street instead of skipping the ones that are using some, the 15% that are using someone else, they would be picking them up now.
I live in, I live in a location that we're on a dead end, and the dead end is in one I live in a location that we're on a dead end, and the dead end is in one community and the approach street is in a different community, and they picked up at different times too. So there's, I'm wondering just how much efficiency they could save, whether that, if they did inefficiency of routes across the various things, whether they would be able to give a little bit and then otherwise just taking it off the bottom line, that's all.
Thank you.
There was a young lady, yes, if you could simply hold on to.
Thank you. Oh, I'm a young lady. My name is Jenny Logan, one-zero-zero-three-nine, Lake Drive. Some years ago, you came to the neighborhood for a grill up promoting the road landing. And at that time, I had asked about getting recycling in the township. I do pay for the convenience of having that recycling picked up from my home. I do appreciate that they take it from my home so I don't have to drive it here. I do know that as a teacher that used to teach economics, that economies of scale does save money and that I have been looking forward to a cheaper bill. When a lot of people are going in on something and you buy in bulk more often than not, you are gonna save money. And I have all confidence in you that you're gonna make the decision for all of us that will allow us all to save money and get recycling.
Absolutely.
And I also feel that it is also a public good as we look to the future. Recycling is something that just has to happen and, because we have to save the resources for our kids. And I just feel very strongly about that. I could say, I have never used police service. I have never used fire service. Why do I have to pay for it? Well, I'm glad it's there. I'm not glad I haven't had to use it. And it's paid through my taxes. I don't get a bill for it, but I'm still paying for it. So I wanna thank you for looking into this and I really hope that you can get us going and get us to a price on our recycling. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a hand. Well, let me have you go first and then we'll do, because you both have already said, we'll do, yeah, closes first.
Catherine Rockfield, seven-fifty Ringard, Fiddy Town. You mentioned something about making park benches out of the recycling. I think that's a great idea. That's a great incentive to recycle because if you think somebody can make something useful out of it, who does that? Would the people, the, so whoever gets the bid would be responsible? Could we check up on, so we know that they're not dumping it into the other garbage? That they're actually doing something with it?
The, what I mentioned was, through the money that we get back based on recycling that happens in the community, we utilize those funds to buy equipment sometimes that are made of recyclable materials such as park benches.
Okay.
There are companies out there that utilize recyclable materials and made products. We buy those from those type of companies. As far as to ensure that the waste hauler is recycling, yes. There are rules, regulations, laws in place to ensure that they are recycling exactly what they say they recycle.
They'll still make money off of recycling, by selling the recycling, because they sell it. So they're definitely not gonna throw it in with the garbage if they have to compost.
Right.
Yeah, that really was strange. Okay, so you, with the money that you save, where you sell something, you buy recycled things? How did you save that? How do you buy the recycled benches and things?
There, there's a certain tonnage amount of waste that the township as a whole, you know, produces, all residents, businesses, the gas usage residents. The, the waste haulers then report back as to how much of that waste was recyclable material. How much of it was recycled? Based on the percentage of the total tonnage of waste, it could be eight percent, it could be ten percent, thirty percent, whatever the number is, based on the percentage of recyclable that happens, monies come back to the township. We then utilize those monies and then buy items that they.
Okay, great. So you have somebody in your thing who does that, right, who's responsible for that?
I think the answer to your question is there's times where we may need, for instance, a picnic table.
Yeah.
We try to use recyclable materials and then use the funds. So rather than take that out of our general fund, we'll use this restricted fund, which is the recycling dollar fund, anywhere we can to purchase something that we otherwise would have to use general fund money if it's a recyclable.
Great.
In some cases, it's even carted. You know, we're replacing materials back at our senior center. We'll try to use recyclable materials because then we can use that fund. So we'll, we'll try to use that and utilize that on as many opportunities as we can.
Great, so if you let us know about that, we'd feel good about that. Yes, put this on their website. The gentleman that's right here, and I apologize, I didn't see your hand earlier.
My name is Jack Evans, one-two-zero-eight-one, Sudo Creek, and Pleasant Run Farms. I would just like to ask that you go back and review the, you've got a multi-tiered price structure. If, you know, what would be permitted under the unlimited as far as what they will take, what container we have to use, and how, and how much?
As far as the unlimited, whatever you can fit in a garbage container that if each individual container doesn't weigh in excess of forty pounds. So you could put out eight garbage cans and whatever you could put in those, assuming each one of those don't weigh more than forty pounds. You could put out fifteen of them, that is, each of them cannot weigh more than forty pounds.
Must be in a container?
Correct. Except for the garbage, which can be, you know, bundled up into forfeit sections if it's limbs or something of that nature, also not exceeding the forty pound weight limit. And as far as bulk items, that's once a month. It does not have to be in a container. But as far as weekly collection, it would obviously have to be in a container. But that container with the materials in it cannot exceed forty pounds, and those containers are.
So there's no plastic bag?
No, there's state. You pay a bag. It just can't be a plastic bag. I just said, it can't be loose material.
Right, but it could be a, it could be a plastic bag. Anything. So I could put out two plastic bags.
Absolutely.
You put out twenty-two plastic bags.
Yeah.
Or a hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you have another question.
John E. Wall, Zenith Court. Basically, what I wanted, if anybody thinks Runkie's gonna take it to shorts, you're crazy. Because if, if you listen to what everybody's talking about, route consolidations, they're gonna save money there. And number two, what we've all been talking about, recycling. The recycling percentage is gonna go from single digit to twenty percent.
All those.
They're making a killing on the recycling products. So that's where we're gonna save money. The more people that recycle, that's what's gonna make the program better for all of us. A lot of money.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I can say one thing about recycling. That's something that in the township here, a number of years ago, we decided to, to try. And I know there were some people that said, oh, don't get into it. It's gonna be a mess. There'll be people throwing trash out here. And we put a bunch of dumpsters here behind the township. And, and I will say, I've been proud that we said, no, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna try. We don't think people act like that, and they haven't. Those things are wildly popular. They fill them up. Every time you come here, usually they're just about full. And Runkie's taking them all the time and it's, you know, it's a way to get stuff out of a landfill and it gets some additional revenue for the township, you know, besides the recycling that happens at the curb. And, and it's been, it's been a good, I think it's just been a good thing for the township, our community, and society overall.
I think I might have been that guy. You started with one dumpster, I think you were about six.
We just recently increased the size of the, the current seat by which we're emptying.
Crease it because there's.
There's some other.
I see another hand, yes.
It's just me here.
Yeah, John Seymour, eight-five-four, Glory Avenue. Just so nobody walks away with a really bad impression. There's not that much money made by the recycling workers. Recycling is a difficult process. And finding products you can make from recycled materials has been a limiting factor in recycling in the entire history of the recycling movement so. But Runkie, even if it breaks even, what you said a moment ago is the real catch on that. If it doesn't go into the landfill, that's the big plus for somebody like recycling, like Runkie, where they are very limited in space and trying to get more space for a landfill is a huge cost to them and also a huge time-consuming process. So that's where the recycling value is to the Runkie group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This young lady right here, if you take your hand.
I'm Terry Wyler, six-six-six-nine, Hamilton, Baytown. I, I'm all for this as long as it's what it is on that level. My parents are in a place where they have to use certain, they have to use a service that the city mandates and they couldn't not screw it with it and they pay. And that's, that's my only concern. I just wanna make sure that it comes on a level and that we're getting exactly what this is and that we're not gonna be charged over in the long run or mandated by any other things. That's, that's my only concern. I like the recycling. I love the recycling. I think, is there any way to make that a requirement for houses? My sons and these two.
They all get paid back.
They all get a can.
They all get, they all have to pay for it, whether they use it or so on.
Out in the building.
Yeah, that's my son, will you please turn?
One thing I can say about it though, all the trustees that live in Springfield Township, they all have to participate in it. If it's a problem, they'll know it because they'll, you know, they're gonna be part of the work. It's not like our Congress and Senate that exclude themselves. They all participate so they all know if it's working or not. Believe me, they can, they can voice their opinion if it's not working.
For me, it would be wonderful that I don't have to drive over here.
Yes.
Right.
That'd be nice. Is there any way to make businesses recycle? Because it's so frustrating when I go to especially in business, but local business. And I sometimes take some of my stuff from the recycling, and that sounds awful and a little weird, but I cannot see any of all this stuff go to the waste that doesn't need to. Is there any way to make some of the businesses recycle, or all the businesses recycle?
The way the law's written, you know, that law we brought out, I think, applies specifically to residential.
We'll be on that. We can't pay residential recycling. We can make them pay for it. We can, we can make them get a cart. We can't pay them to put the recyclables in a cart.
Oh, sure.
So how do cities do that? Like Seattle has mandatory, I know there's, I have other friends in cities that are mandatory to recycle for businesses. Well, for, for businesses and for.
It might be because they're a different state and they, they're a city not a township as well.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question. Where it said, in one of your slides indicated if individuals have disabilities, that the company would come and, and pick, move their garbage out to, or take care of it. Is that, does Runkie, Runkie provide that service now?
I, I'm, I'm.
I know.
You for additional fee, I'm, I was.
So this would be, so it's an additional fee?
Right.
That service now would not be an additional fee? Okay, but you could still contract, we could negotiate on what that fee would be.
We'll have to specify what that fee would be.
Yes. Okay. I was just thinking of the, the lady that was sharing how it's difficult, you know, to move big cans at times.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure we could accommodate those individuals with special needs.
Yes.
You know. Just wanna clarify something. Holly, Chris, I'm in Hamilton County Recycling and Solid Waste District. The backyard service you were mentioning, I just looked into discussions we had, Chris. And it does say that individuals that meet the criteria for ADA and are heads of households with no other person residing are made qualified for backyard service at no additional charge.
Oh, that's wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Holly.
Yeah, I can say one thing, and this is, and this kinda goes to my thought process and I think the, the, the process that we as a board are going to have to employ when we evaluate these bids, assuming we get there. I think everybody needs to realize, we're in here with other partners who might, they might be having a meeting like this tonight and their residents might be saying, this thing stinks and we want, we don't wanna do it. I don't think so, but there's always the possibility that our partners may not, that their boards may not go forward and this, this proposal may fall apart. But assuming that it does, it's going to be, I think there's a lot of positive things for our community, but we're going to at the same time have to weigh the financial wherewithal of the willing bidder. You know, to make sure that just because somebody gave us a low price, that we need to, you know, make sure we're not signing up our community for somebody who's not gonna be able to deliver. I know there was at one time, I know Mike and Chris had somebody who was calling and they wanted to take over all, all waste hauling for the township. They had no trucks. They wanted to contract first and then they were gonna go out and buy trucks and, and, you know, employ people. And so it'll be very important that we analyze the financial wherewithal and the ability of anybody that does bid on this to actually deliver good service to our community. And so that's, there's a lot of different factors that go into this and we're gonna have to carefully weigh all of them to make sure that we're in the end getting a good deal. I, to the lady who was here that said, and I, and I had another gentleman talk about, you know, the, the loss of your ability to choose. We take that as, you know, that's important too. And we won't enter into this lightly, and if it's going to be for some, you know, nominal amount, it probably isn't worth it. But if we think there can be real savings, like there has been in our energy aggregation program for the residents over the years, then we'll, then we will pursue it. And one of the things that God is looking at this is looking at what other jurisdictions pay. And we're paying on the higher end because they can, Runkie and the other waste haulers can charge what they want. They're really not under competition. The same thing's true with Duke Energy years ago. When they were doing a game in town, they gotta set their rates and that's the way it went. When the state legislature passed laws to allow for energy aggregation, all of a sudden there was competition and, and guess what happened? Rates started going down as other people entered the market. So we're hoping that works here. But we, I just wanna assure everyone is a member of the board of trustees. We'll be looking at all, all angles, all options, what makes sense, what doesn't, you know, for the good of the whole community.
Absolutely.
I think to realize, that's a good point, and it's Holly's here. I don't think we mentioned this, but we do have a professional consultant that is developing these bid specifications and will be conducting the bid meetings and reviewing the bids when they come in. She does this all across the country and she's being paid by Hamilton County Solid Waste Network to do this. And she's an expert in this field. So it isn't us up here doing blindly, although we're very involved in the process. We do have a professional working on our behalf to ensure that these bid specifications are correct and that all the providers will buy by them. The bids are something that is not the lowest, but the most responsible that there is.
The longer the longer the people.
Absolutely.
So if you have that many eyes observing and evaluating and assessing the specs, it has to be a good thing. And, and as Joe said, bottom line is we as your trustees want to ensure that we're doing the right thing for the residents and the community, including ourselves, of course, but we do. Any other questions? Okay, next we have our resolutions.
Probably adjourn the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
And then we can be world session. Thanks, everybody, for coming up and giving your feedback. We do appreciate it.
Right now, then we're gonna adjourn the special hearings. And then we will go into our work session and pass the resolutions regarding the two public hearing items that we've been discussing tonight.
I'll second the motion to adjourn the public portion of this hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
That part of the meeting is adjourned.